Kick off Finance Committee?
Yep.
Yep, we're live.
Alright, so Item One under Finance, Acceptance of Reports. Treasurers Report, Capital Reserve Fund, Capital Projects Fund, and Cafeteria Fund.
So you have the Treasurers Report in your folder there. The other items we just received, account statements today, so we'll get those to you for next week.
The account statements for?
The Capital Reserve Fund, the Cafeteria Fund.
Any questions? Item Two, Approval of the Check Registers on October Budget Summary for a total of one million four hundred twenty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents.
And those were sent with the packet on Saturday.
Item Three, Payment Requests from MHE Engineering, MHE Engineering Services for the Athletic Entrance for six hundred and forty-six dollars. And then, MHE Engineering Services for Auditorium Renovation for two seventy-three. Have we received our soundboard yet?
The light board? No, we have not.
Haven't heard anything on it.
No, I'll check in with them to see what the holdup is at this point. Because it has been well over a year at this point.
Thank you.
Yep.
Item Four, The Biomass Fuel Bid Opening on ten seven twenty-two.
And that was provided in the packet. The, we only received one bid, it was from Louis Longber, came in at forty-one dollars per delivered ton. For a total of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. For, based on seven hundred and twenty delivered tons, so.
Did it loop up from last year?
It did, but I think that, I mean, A, just everything's more expensive, and B, you have to factor in the additional mileage and time for the detour, and so, you know, as always, it's a stupendous deal for the district.
How many tons did we burn last year?
Uh, not as much, five eighty?
And that was even with the additional air?
Because the weather wasn't temper, it was a little warmer. I mean, normally it's around six thirty that we normally burn.
Item Five, Membership and the Inter-Local Purchasing System, TIPS, Co-op Purchasing Program.
So, number five is connected with Item Six, so I'll talk about both of them together. In July, or with this fiscal year's budget, we approved an amount of money to replace our storage array. It's just the next item that was needed to, for upkeep on our server array, so there's storage, there's compute, and then there's network. So typically, we just replace one component a year, and that kind of keeps your budget level over the years. What I started looking into in July is the possibility of taking the funds that were allocated for that single storage array and getting a whole refresh on all of our server components all at once and putting it on a lease. That, for an amount that's approximate to what we normally pay each year anyway. And the reason for that is that, you know, one, I'm seeing price increases on components going up, you know, ten, fifteen percent each year. So, each year that we wait, we can expect to pay more than next year. The other, probably more important factor is, we go to order things, and sometimes they arrive in two weeks, and sometimes it's many, many months. I mean, I still have things on order from the spring that haven't arrived yet. So, thinking being, if we could bundle everything together, get all of our entire server infrastructure upgraded all at once, we don't have to worry about next year when we go to buy components, are they actually going to be available, you know, in July or August? Are they going to show up in April or May, or even later? So, started working with the IU on what that would look like, got quotes, was ready to bring it to the Board in September, but I was looking at the quotes that we had, and one vendor couldn't offer us their products on one of our normal cooperative purchasing agreements, like Co-Stars or Pepham. And they were in the process of getting on the Pepham contract, and that's just a Pennsylvania Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. Organization, the, those cooperative purchasing agreements allow you to buy hardware without going through the bid process if it's above, you know, the twenty-one thousand. Because those organizations have gone through the process of establishing bids, putting out requests for quotes, and they've done the work for you, and then everyone else can participate. So they're not on Co-Stars, they're not on Pepham, but they could offer us the, a quote via the TIPS contract, which is organized out of Texas. You're allowed to use other states' cooperative purchasing agreements. Montorsall School District actually purchased technology equipment last fiscal year via the TIPS contract as part of their federal money, so. So, coming back to it, if we want to move forward right now and not wait until January when this vendor gets on Pepham, we would need to sign up with TIPS, or become a member of TIPS, and then all of the other products that are listed in that server refresh are either below the bid thresholds or they're offered to us via a cooperative purchasing agreement of some form or another. So, so that's where number five comes from and ties into number six.
Now, I apologize, you could have said it, I'm sorry. What would that cost the district to join this?
Uh, it's no cost to join, you just, it has to be board-approved, and we have to send the agreement form in before we can start utilizing it, so.
Now, how about if we wanted to leave that program? Is there any stipulation? Obviously, if there's no payment forward?
Um, I'd have to look into that, you know, like how, you know, once you're a member, I guess you could send them a notice saying you no longer want to participate. But really, it just comes, you know, when I talked to Montorsall, I said, "How often do they use it?", and they said it was just that one. There's one component that was only offered under the TIPS program. In their board policy, it didn't require that it even get board-approved. There's just like an online, like, membership form that you fill out for TIPS, so they just went and filled it out. Our board policy requires that we bring it to you guys, you know, to join up with that. And I think it's the May or June meeting, there's a slew of agreement forms that we put before the Board on a yearly basis. So, if we wouldn't want to participate anymore, I guess we could, you know, just strike that from the record in May, you know, but.
And then for six, for the lease option, you're evaluating annual costs versus, you know, lease versus buy, basically where it's at?
Yep.
What's the term on the lease?
It'd be a sixty-month term, which is the expected lifespan of the equipment that we'd be purchasing. So, and it's part of the quotes, that bundled into that are the service agreements too, for that time span. So it's not like, so this would be everything, you know, we'd buy the servers and also the five-year warranty on them. We'd buy the storage array and the five years of support on it as well, so get everything all at once. You know, I'm just concerned that, in particular, I'm concerned with the supply chain, that you could have an event, and then all of a sudden, you know, we're looking at a period of time. What's that?
How about the security on it? How's that managed? So you're talking about a server infrastructure change, right?
Yeah.
Who manages the security factor on all that? Who handles it? So it changes every six months, like, different piece of equipment, have firmware revisions?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, that's part of the service agreements that we get, so. We run VMware, so in the quote is a quote for VMware and for sixty months of support, so.
Anybody can remote into it, then?
What's that?
So how many licenses with VMware?
Uh, so it would cover the two hosts that we have. Or actually, the three hosts, you know, two production hosts and one disaster recovery host. The actual patching, we do internally, either I do it or I have the IU do it. But they, that's the, the support agreement is covered for sixty months then. So if they, you know, any security vulnerabilities that they have, we're covered, they push out the patch, we can apply it. With the servers that we are getting, we'd be able to migrate all of our services from one host to another middle of the day, so even if it was like an emergency security vulnerability, it needed to be patched right away, we could move, like, every service that's running from one host to another, patch, you know, patch it on the production host, move all the services back, patch it on the other host, and then, you know, divvy them back up, really balancing.
Cool.
So as long as, you know, the general feedback from the Board is, you know, that that's something we're interested in doing, I'll get an updated lease agreement and have, you know, the full contract out to the Board this week, you know, and for review by John as well.
Thank you.
And the only other on Finance was just an informational item that's in your packet there. Mrs. Evelyn accepted donations from several organizations related to the school-wide Positive Behavior Program, and those were all below the five-hundred-dollar threshold, so she took them, but we'll still share that good news with the Board.
Yeah, so thank you, Ataraxia, Report Store, Haidan Bend, thank you. We appreciate any donations you guys can do or any others this would like to. Don't make that. That's all for Finance Committee.
Alright, nobody else has any questions, I'll go to Athletics and Health.
Alright, Athletics and Health, we'll kick off, this one was saying congratulations to the soccer team. Riley King especially with fifty goals hit tonight, so congratulations Riley King, they won six-one this evening, so. Awesome job, should be proud. Alright, a little on, Letter of Resignation from Zalean Lachinsky as Varsity Wrestling Cheerleading Coach, Item One. Item Two, we have a Letter of Resignation from Taylor Boltman as Varsity Assistant Boys Basketball Coach. Item Three, Approval of a Reading Competition Elementary Advisor, Meredith Lambert. Approval of a Reading Competition High School Advisor, Megan Boghinsky. And Katie Shoemakers recommended to be hired for the Assistant Girls of Varsity Basketball Coach. Item Six, the Administration may also make a recommendation to hire coaching staff by next Tuesday, we'll be aware of. Seven, the Administration recommends approval to start the NASP National Archery and Schools Program. Information can be found at www.naspschools.org. I think Lynn had some information to share with us as well for the archery program.
So that program was actually something that's been approved in the past, but it kind of fizzled out because of COVID and trainings expired. I know it was brought up last Board Meeting, like, do we have approval for this to move forward, so I wanted to put it on here. Basically, I talked a little bit last time about reaching out to Toncanic Area School District, they have a program there. The gentleman there is willing to come up and let us know what we need to do to get started. I think what I put in the memo, what we may need is some new netting for background, because what we have is huge, and, you know, talking to the gym teachers, like, well, it would be perfect to do it in the spring. I'm like, but, the competitions are in the spring, so we need to be working throughout the winter. And with the large curtain that is down there, we would need something small, more manageable to move. But the guy from Toncanic is willing to come up and say this would be a perfect spot for it. The phys ed teachers, including the phys ed assistant or aide, would need to be certified. Plus, we have a parent and a community member that would be interested in working with that to get them trained. That's just, we give them a couple of dates, they say we'll be up then, the cost of training is free, so there's no charge to do that. I know Toncanic had said they have a couple people that need to get certified as well, so maybe we can coordinate with them and do it together. But we just, we would like to get the program started very soon and get it up and rolling, and just want to make sure that it's okay with you of the Boards.
Cool, yeah, I think it's, I think everyone was pretty excited about the potential. I know that, like Scott, he stays in contact periodically, just like, you know, how's it going?
Everybody's been very helpful reaching, you know, we, I think I mentioned, had two students from another, from Toncanic Area School District move into the district, so their dad's been very willing to help, and, you know, we've got kids that have been part of the program and are excited about it, so that would be helpful for kids. And I also would like to get the elementary phys ed teacher trained as well, because it's a program that starts in fourth grade, I believe, and start in fourth grade. Introduce it to them in phys ed, and then have the evening program. I just have to work with Ryan to figure out when we could, and the parents or teachers running it, so we have gym space for that.
And any other, if anybody has any questions input? That is all for Athletics and Health this evening.
Building the grounds. Number one, Information, Use of Facilities Requests have been received from the following District Activities. Health and Wellness Committee on January twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, in the SC, the Elementary Cafeteria for Health Screens. B, Elementary Intramural Wrestling from September twenty-sixth through October twenty-sixth. C, Halloween Dance hosted by the sophomore class on October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, in the High School Cafeteria. Item D, Open Gym Softball on October twenty-third on the softball field or gym weather permitted. Item E, Halloween Parade on October thirty-first in the Solomon County Elementary School bus loop at one-thirty PM or the High School Auditorium, depending on the weather. F, Drama Club Rehearsals, October fourth through March third, intermittently after school from three-thirty to five-thirty PM in the High School Auditorium. G, Drama Club Tech Rehearsals and Performances from March sixth to March eleventh in the High School Auditorium. Any thing I may have? Item Two, Use of Facilities Requests from the Community Basketball Group for Recreational Basketball from October twenty-third through April seventeenth on Sundays. Anything?
What's that, are we going to have, like, competitions?
No, it's just basically members of the community that come and play basketball.
Oh, older people?
Yeah.
Older.
Like, older basketball.
But they call it Community Basketball Group on their request.
Perfect.
Yes, that, that is what I've heard it referred to at times there.
Is there medical staff?
Yeah. No, that's why we have the insurance.
Do we have any?
There's an A for joking to ground.
I'd just like to bring up, like, well, the girls are starting junior high, right? Junior high basketball, so we've got to make sure we stay on top of the gym so that they're using, so we keep them nice and clean, so. Because I know last year there was a lot of stress injuries, so.
Lance, do you have any, is there any info on the entry at all? Athletic entry?
Doug was finding out about.
I mean, as far as progress?
Yeah, we, during our committee meeting, he said he would look into it. You have to give him a little time.
No, that's alright, I didn't know.
Yeah.
I don't know if we can push them at some point, because the original schedule was out pretty far, like, all-in schedule.
You're only going to be able to push them so much.
Are they done with the roof repairs?
No, they have, it's under roof now, the membrane's done, they actually finished that separate room, but they have all the flashing and some other tidy up work to do yet. Other than that, it's close, so close. They just started on, basically, yesterday. They get it dried off good enough, and then they won't break them, because they already had one half finished. And today, it's the other half. It's good.
Yeah, it's good, Thursday.
Yeah, just in time.
Hopefully, they have a party up while we're off.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good?
Yep.
Curriculum?
Yep, and before we get started, I'll note, we did not have a work session this month. Usually, we do it the day before these committee meetings, but because it was holiday on Monday, we didn't do it. This month, our next one is November first, if anyone's interested in that. So, items here, number one, Agreement with Merrick, am I saying that right?
I'm recent.
Yeah, this is for a therapeutic foster care program. Anyone have any questions? And then, Item Two is Approval of New Curriculums to Be Presented by Victim Services. And so they had a list in here. There's a, it looks like a money course, a vaping prevention program, yeah, both of those. Sounds great.
There is the, an other than?
Oh, is there another?
Should have a sheet in there for a prom proposal for the class of twenty-twenty-three.
Yes, Administration recommends Approval of the Attached Prom Proposal. I don't have any questions.
Well, why would we talk about prom? No one has it, there's no one at all.
From what I understand, it's going, and this has happened before, it's called Winter Ball, so it can be whenever in the winter, not necessarily at Christmas time. I believe they're working on a Valentine's Ball-type thing.
Cool.
There was, there was some concern about number of kids participating and in discussion. Typically, the Winter Ball and Prom have been juniors and seniors only, they can invite down to a ninth grader. What we have discussed is possibly opening up to tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, inviting down to a ninth grade, because we have spring flying with ninth, up to ninth grade can invite, the tenth graders are not allowed to invite anybody to anything. So we thought we might open it up for the Winter Ball, only not Prom, but for the, but that's, they're working on a Valentine's Ball. Any questions on the prom proposal?
No, I just looked the place up, because I never heard of it, and that's super cute.
I believe Munsee held their prom there in the spring.
Yeah. Now, how does that work with the transportation thing? Have we ever done one?
We have, so we've, I know, I've had a class that, we were the first class to hold a prom outside of the county in a long time, and it was at Farrington Place in downtown Williamsport. So there was some concern about kids driving in downtown Williamsport and leaving.
Right.
So we did provide a bus, so if kids didn't want to drive, they could take the bus down. It was the class paid for the bus, the kids did not. I think they did it for the next year or a year or two after another class went down, and they offered the same thing, and the kids were like, we could, they didn't need the bus, so that's.
I like that it's offered.
Right, and, you know, I think last year they were at Foggy Hollow, so the kids that live in Sunstown have to go to Foggy Hollow. Is it different from the kids that live in Cully and have to go to Munsee, you know?
Right. A little farther. You're going to have that no matter where you go.
Yeah.
Nice, thank you.
Good deal.
And the twenty-five-dollar cost has been the price for a prom ticket for years.
Yeah, that's impressive.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything for curriculum, questions, additions? Alright, cruising through, Personnel?
Administration recommends the hiring of a music teacher. Administration recommends Approval of Teacher Mentors. Administration recommends An Addition to the List of Approved Substitute Custodians. Acceptance of a Letter of Resignation from a Technology Director. Five, Administration may make a recommendation to add to the list of approved event staff, game managers, substitute custodians, substitute food service workers, substitute secretaries, and substitute bus drivers. And six, is there anything else?
Maybe there's not.
Anybody have any questions about any of those? Unfortunately, we hired a Technology Director, and now we're going to be looking for, hiring a new Technology Director.
Made it all day, huh?
No, he made about three.
So that, a little bit of setback on Lance's dual-rolling.
We'll keep moving forward.
Don't be scared, don't be scared, all businesses are doing it now, dual-rolling is a new, it's the new norm, you can do two jobs.
True story. Is the music teacher position our last vacancy for instructional staff?
Just think of yourself as that baseball player who's a pitcher.
It's a great position to be in, finally.
Yes, let's hope it stays that way for a while. That's all I got?
Okay, also procedure?
Uh, one, the acceptance of the FOTL policy for second read, A policy nine oh three, public participation in Board Meetings.
Good deal. I'm glad I, John asked about being present tonight. Looking at the topics, I don't think we had anything super controversial, and so I'm glad that I told him, because he would have drove all the way up here for, which might be a record committee meeting. But he's on call if we would have needed him, but I told him, "Don't drive up tonight." Other than that, the transportation is last, there's nothing unless you guys have any questions or concerns.
Is SC twenty-one getting here on time?
They're arriving each morning around eight-thirty-five, which is when we expected them to get here. And that is before first period, first period starts. We have the cafeteria left open in both schools, so students have access to breakfast.
I don't want to jinx it, I don't think they've been after eight-forty.
They have not, no, so. That, we knew that one would be the longest route, and, you know, just thinking about families' morning routines, you know, we wanted to try it where we kept the pickup times the same in the morning, and then we'd see how they were doing. So he's been pretty consistent with that eight-thirty-five time. Usually whoever's taking the, or whoever's doing the morning bus duty, they send out a little radio call to let both schools know when SC twenty-one is actually here. And the, you know, the first-period teachers are aware.
And the first five minutes are attendance and announcements at the high school, so they're.
I just wanted, because I got just a few comments from parents about it, and I'm like, well, we could.
I mean, I don't want to talk of the kids in any way.
No.
And it sounds like they're getting here before the actual education round starts, so it's, they're not having a job. Man, it sounds like they're getting here before the actual education round starts, so not having to adjust the parents' morning schedules when it sucks around the bus that long, but.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that brings up, how often do we assess our bus routes? Is that done every year with the end of the year? I don't know if we talked about it.
Yeah, you know, and unfortunately, we're, we're, you know, we're so spread out, there's, there's not a lot of optimization you can do. You know, we, we did change, you know, you, you have to, you can, you can change routes around when, there's a couple of places in the county where you can do that. I mean, Dushore, there's several buses that go through there, so if you have, you know, a family move into a location, now one bus is, is almost at capacity, you can think about moving the route to, to adjust that a little bit.
Which we did last year. We had to do that last year.
Yeah, we, we had to do it again this, this summer as well, before the start of the year. But yeah, unfortunately, I mean, there, there are whole software packages you can get that will, you know, that larger districts.
Easy route. It's come up. Well, the map, it's called Rand McNally.
The map is big in District Office.
The District Office has a, yeah, I mean, it's probably eight foot by ten foot.
So an example, what I've heard, like, so I know SC five goes out, Dutch Mountain Road, comes back out, Lopez, goes all the way out Red Rock, comes back through Lopez. If they went out Red Rock, come back Dutch Mountain, then back through Lopez, it's not a backtrack of things.
Right.
And I think if there's only one or two pickups out there, so I didn't know how that all factored in. I'm just learning how that route works. It's crazy.
Yeah, I mean, some, sometimes it's a matter of where the bus can actually get turned around, depending on, you know, the roadways that we have. There was, this didn't really change the route too much, but we had a family, you know, move into a location, and, you know, we were just seeing if we could get the bus stop closer on North Street, out, out near Shank. And it was just a matter of whether or not, it actually was SC twenty-one. It was whether or not you could actually find a turnaround down there, because we didn't want to run SC twenty-one all the way, you know, we didn't, we wanted him to be able to come back and not have to go on North Street the whole way through, because that.
Isn't that the pickup where he's gotta go like two miles down the road and turn around or something?
That one's only maybe a couple hundred yards, but he goes down the Huffey, Huffey Road or something like that. There's enough of a, enough clearance where you can actually back into that and then turn, turn back around. But yeah, we, in answer to your question, the routes do get reviewed each summer based on, you know, the, the student, students that are gonna need to ride them. And we, you know, we have to, we have to plan on providing transportation for each family, even if we know year over year, some families don't actually utilize the, the transportation, but, you know, the route has to incorporate them, even if you could, even if you could make it more efficient down, like, oh, this, this student always catches a ride with, you know, a family member that, that works at the school or something like that. You still have to keep them on the route, so.
Any idea how many substitute bus drivers we have right now?
I don't, I don't wanna give an exact number, but I can tell you it is low.
Well, that's why I was wondering. I know two, maybe three bus drivers lost their mother earlier last week, and they were still driving the bus that day.
And?
And that's awful. Not only for them, just safety-wise. I mean, your, your head's not there if you just lost a parent. I don't feel that they should be driving buses. So maybe we need to evaluate that.
Yeah, so the, each contractor is responsible for, you know, actually putting the driver in, in the seat. You know, I don't want to go into detail with that particular situation, but I, you know, we have, we have gotten creative two times to make sure that we didn't have to change. You know, you get notice that a, a bus driver is, is ill or unavailable the next day.
Well, that's why I was asking, like, can a bus driver actually be sick if they are sick?
They can, they can, but we are, if, if there are CDL drivers out there listening, you know, the entire state is looking for bus drivers. That was actually a topic.
Well, because the federal government just keeps getting worse and worse, but, um, it's so tough.
Yeah, there's, there's more requirements.
On bus driving, CDL requirements beginning of this year.
What's that?
They, they waived a whole bunch of different requirements that, to have your busing certification with your CDL, I thought, beginning of the school year. Pretty much, if you have a CDL, you can jump on a school bus.
Right.
Background check, because of things, of course.
Right. And it's, it's necessary, because it was a, it was definitely a topic of discussion at the business managers meeting I was at a couple of weeks ago. You know, difference, you know, different districts have to handle it different ways. You know, some are small enough where they could, could run an extra route. You know, we might end up having to do that here someday. It's, it's just really inefficient, depending on which route you end up having to double back on.
So when we approve, like, the subs, I know we approved some, I think it was last month and maybe the month before, they're specific to a company?
No, the subs can be used across any of the contractors.
Okay.
So who, without getting too much into the weeds, so let's say you wake up in the morning and we get notification that the bus driver's sick. Is it the transportation owner's responsibility or the school's responsibility to seek out an alternate driver?
It is the contractor's responsibility to, to have that route run.
Like, they have the new list of subs, like, as we approve them?
Yeah, yeah, they do. So it is their responsibility, but, but obviously, you know, we want to make sure we get all of our students here, and we need to be part of that discussion, especially if it was like an early morning type of thing, because we need to let the families know and, and make sure everyone's on the same page. Yeah, we, we actually, you know, we're, was it last Thursday night, Dr. Zalotti, we were on the phone troubleshooting, just make, you know, making sure we'd have transportation for all of our students on Friday morning. So, so we are a part of the process too, but, you know, ultimately, they're, they're contracted to, to provide that route. So they're, they're the main point of contact. They're the ones that are making those calls, but we'll, we'll troubleshoot it with them as well.
Okay. So it's like they're, they're on the player agent calls, like, hey, can you, can you play today? Can you play today?
Yeah, yeah. And in, and in that case, we, we resolved it. The one substitute driver was only available in the morning, and, you know, the contractor, when he asked, just asked if you could drive both morning and afternoon, so he said no. But then when we doubled back, it's like, well, if you do the morning, we can come up with another solution for the afternoon. And so that, that, that worked out. We didn't have to change, we didn't have to change anything for our families, which is, is the goal. That hopefully we don't have to call them and say, hey, you're gonna be delayed, or, or, you know, you're gonna get home later, but.
So the substitute list, is that provided by the contractors then? So they'll, they'll, they'll provide, like, hey, I found another driver potentially, put them on potentially.
And they'll let us know, and then we'll, we'll get him before the board, and, and the reason we have that generic statement on our committee agendas is so if we get, you know, last minute notice on Friday, you know, we can, we can have it before the board without having to, you know, run afoul of the Sunshine Act. So, but yeah, so if you know anyone.
Well, I think it's just, again, looking ahead, but I think when we go through the contract review, that, that process should be a huge portion of our evaluation and approval process on, you know, what that, what that experience is like when you do have a call in, or how often does it happen, or, because I'm just gonna say it out loud, like, the fact that we had somebody whose mother or family member pass away, I don't want to get into the details. I don't know the details. What I do know is that they were driving the bus. So however, that was discussed, talked about, discussed, done. It's, in my opinion, it's kind of sad, it's pretty sad they were driving the bus.
Yeah.
And I, and I'm not saying, I'm not, I don't, I'm not directing that at you or the school, or, but, that, that's just, that's a, no one should have to do that. But they did.
Yeah.
And they, they should be commended for it.
They should be. And, and I think that's where most of our, most of our drivers are at. You know, they, they do really feel committed to.
Oh, they would do anything, yeah, for the students, for sure.
Yeah.
That's the problem, though. When you hear stuff like that happens, it's, it's rough.
Certainly would have understood if they had called in and said, hey, can you help us out?
Everybody creates in different ways too.
That was.
Not everybody, not everybody feels, you know.
No doubt, but based on the conversations that I was, that I don't think that that was, I don't, I'm pretty sure that wasn't the case with this situation, so just throwing it out there. But the kids did get to school.
They did.
I'm sorry, we appreciate it. Guys have anything else on transportation? If anybody wants to be a sub, but bus driver, that's fantastic.
Sign me up.
Lance has the forms.
Clear to bring him to them back today. All I knew.
All right, cool. I don't have anything else. We're good to adjourn.